I call to order the special meeting work session of Board of Education for Tuesday, June twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty five. April, would you please call the role?
Ms. Byer.
Ms. Byer is excused.
Mr. Goodwin.
Here.
Dr. Johnson Farr.
Present.
Mrs. Krivolovek.
Present.
Ms. Momgard.
Here.
Dr. Rowner.
Here.
Mr. Shavastev.
Present. The Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted and available at the entrance to the room. Next on agenda is the two thousand and twenty five preliminary budget, and I would like to request Dr. Liz Standish to come forward for the presentation.
Good evening. We are excited to be here for this point in the budget process, and we're going to focus predominantly on the general fund tonight, but we'll talk about many facets and variables related to the preliminary proposed budget for Lincoln Public Schools for two thousand and twenty five, two thousand and twenty six. We also want to make sure something we showcase and highlight very clearly tonight are the upcoming opportunities over the course of the next week or two weeks for the community to be engaged in the process of developing the Lincoln Public Schools budget. So as I stated earlier, we'll talk mostly about the general fund, be happy to entertain any questions or discussion from board members throughout the work session. This document is not necessarily meant for people to see every single task. It's really just meant to display the holistic approach that we take to developing a budget in Lincoln Public Schools. We begin as soon as enrollment is available in November, and we begin the process of forecasting. We use a three-year forecast, and that forecast is heavily relied upon all throughout the budget and specifically early on for the work related with the board on negotiations and setting parameters for negotiations and making decisions about negotiations. We go into January and February, begin meeting our HR team and our curriculum and instruction team, meet with every school. They're reviewing every grade level, every section, looking at class sizes, really identifying what is the best staffing plan for each school site, and those decisions begin to emerge as we go through the spring months. We're also collecting a great deal of data from various directors that are talking about their needs as they're merging that forward. Then we get into this June where we are the second board meeting in June where we have the opportunity to present to the public our preliminary proposed budget for the twenty five, twenty six school year, and we do need feedback on that here the end of June, beginning of July, prior to our next work session, which will be the end of July, so the finance committee and the board can think about any adjustments prior to starting the school year. Once we get into August and we have assessed valuation certified, we need to make minor changes there, and then the school year is started, and we're really just looking at the statutorily required elements of the budget at that point in time. So to highlight what we have coming on this week is we have a work session tonight right here at four thirty, opportunity for public comment here at the work session and then also at the board meeting. We tomorrow will open an online input window where if you go to the district website, you will be able to submit questions, you'll be able to submit comments. You can attend public forums. We have one tomorrow at noon, which you can access through the district website, one tomorrow evening right here in this building at six o'clock, and then another one that you can access through the district website that's virtual at six. And the element that we added last year was the online input. So if someone maybe viewed a portion of one of those forums on Facebook, they would have a place to go to take action. They would have a place to go to ask a question, to get an answer, and we have a rolling Q and A available on the website. We will be closing the formal online input window July eleventh. That information will be compiled, forwarded to the Board of Education so that we have that as the finance committee meets in July to prepare for the July work session. That does not mean that we're no longer answering questions or having conversations about the budget. We're more than happy to talk to anyone in the community anytime about ideas that are in the budget. It's we do have to basically think, bring things to a close so we can make decisions. And once again, as we move into August, we have routinely scheduled Board of Education meetings. We will have a budget hearing the end of August and opportunities for public comment. In September, we have two different things that can happen. This is a, this is an or, so these both don't happen. We will have our first reading of our budget September ninth, and then if we are required to attend the countywide joint public hearing, if our tax regret, um, tax request growth exceeds the allowable growth that's allowed by the district, we would then be in the joint public hearing, and we would be listed on what many people refer to as the pink postcard that goes in mailboxes. This model at this time, we do not believe exceeds that allowable growth. So we believe right now, based on our preliminary analysis, that we would be doing the property tax request hearing here at a school board meeting. Those numbers could change as we make decisions and get closer to August, but based on the model that we currently have, we would not be at the pink postcard hearing. We would then have a Board of Education meeting in September and begin the work on the property tax request. The budget is due the end of September, and you can see those two different choices of what might happen. We have to continue to be prepared for that. We do not receive our final calculations for this until late August. So we just need to be prepared that we want to make sure everything works out as we forecast before we make a final decision. Throughout this process, you'll notice that we have about two public work sessions, three public forums, six Board of Education meetings that have public comment available. We have an online input window via the district website that people can do anytime at their convenience, and two public hearings. And all of the information for the budget, including videos of work sessions, and all of the resources that are available, including the presentation, is available on the district website. The fastest way to find there is just to type in the keyword budget, and then you'll be able to get to all of the resources. One item I do want to note that you can see that's available on our district website is sometimes when we talk about property taxes and we maybe hear from a property owner who's in a hardship circumstance, something we want to make people aware of is the homestead exemption. We're not the governing body for the homestead exemption. We're not the experts on that, but we do have a link to the Department of Revenue that is available, and that filing deadline is June thirtieth. So if there's people out in the community that want to learn more about the homestead exemption, they would need to do that and get that filed before June thirtieth. One thing we keep talking about with our budget is the idea of volatility. We are navigating larger swings. It's, it has not stabilized to incremental what maybe ten years ago was just a more incremental budget process. We have a lot of changes in a lot of the variables that make up our budget. Some of those include federal funding. We'll talk a little bit about student enrollment. This year, we have some impacts on the budget related to legislative changes, state aid changes pretty dramatically from year to year, and so has our property valuation and property value projections. We also know that economic conditions in the labor market are a significant force right now. So we'll dive into the general fund expenditure budget, and I've talked about this a little bit when we were looking at the graphic on how we have staffing conferences with each school, reviewing class size. We work with the finance committee, and we're constantly looking at that three-year forecast and what we can do to best serve students when we're looking at the twenty five, twenty six school year. When we think about Lincoln Public Schools, we are a growing school district, and we've historically been a growing school district in the city of Lincoln. And so you can see that our trend, even though a little bit there during the pandemic, we had a decline, and then we had a little bit of a flat trend for a few years. We are on the uptick of being a growing school district again as new families are moving to Lincoln. One factor on school enrollment in Lincoln and across the nation, so this is not a Lincoln thing, this is a nationwide thing, is the declining birth rate. So the birth rate has continued to decline since a peak in about two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve. And so you can see those declining numbers on the far right-hand side of the chart. The dark blue is the city of Lincoln, and the light blue is Lancaster County. When we think about birth rate, we analyze enrollment, we use the word cohort. So a cohort is the students that are in our school system. So as they move from kindergarten to first grade to second grade to third grade, that's our known cohort of students that are enrolled in our school system. You would notice that some of our classes at the high school level are a little bit higher, kind of peaking with that tenth grade class up close to thirty-five hundred, a ninth grade class right behind it with about thirty-three hundred. We do increase in enrollment from eighth grade to ninth grade. So when you look at your eighth grade number of thirty-one hundred, that will grow a little bit going into ninth grade. We do have families that join us for high school, for that high school experience, that might not be previously enrolled in the Lincoln Public Schools. And as we have new families move in, these numbers then grow. So this is just looking at our grade count of students that we have today. And when you look at two thousand and twenty-three that fall, and the reason I'm focused on K-12 enrollment is because that's the variables for state aid predominantly. We have a factor for early childhood, but the actual formula student count is predominantly K-12. You can see we grew five hundred and seventy-five students. So from a, from a, you know, state aid formula perspective, that was a pretty significant increase in the number of students, and then the additional early childhood students were on top of that. We are estimating, when we look at just our cohort enrollment to next year, an increase of about a hundred and thirty-five students. That's not taking into account any new students moving into the city of Lincoln. So families moving into the city of Lincoln throughout the year will bolster that number, and then you'll all, all also notice that we estimate our early childhood enrollment to be matching the previous year. So you'll notice in this budget, there continues to be an investment in early childhood. We are hoping to open some additional early childhood classrooms next year, and so that would end up increasing the enrollment as well. So the one thirty-five could be categorized as a, as a conservative estimate, but we honestly don't know families moving out, families moving in, and what that net will be when we get to next November. Considering student needs and student enrollment is one of the first things that we look at, and then as we're looking at the proposals that come forward, one of the next steps we take is aligning each and every proposal to the strategic plan. So how does the request meet one of the outcomes that's been identified by the community and by the Board of Education in the school district's strategic plan? So we'll start with student well-being and outcomes. And just as a reminder, we won't go through these in detail, they're available on the website, but some of the goals that we're trying to achieve by two thousand and twenty-nine, and one of the goals that we're pulling out is a place where we aligned additional increases for the next year's budget was in the area of the graduation rate. So we're increasing our investment in graduation pathways, supporting students through bilingual liaisons, that's based on student growth, student support teachers, hope squads, which is suicide prevention awareness, and our increase in summer school, growing that to a larger, single-site summer school. And you will notice a few elements through this slide where we may have things that are rolling off grants, so we're putting them in the general fund to sustain them. So we have some social workers previously funded by Title I and social workers for schools. So we've aligned some of these student supports under the graduation rate goal of about one point four million. Early childhood is something that the district has routinely invested in. We are investing in two additional classrooms, which would be four sections of early childhood, and then the additional supports for the early childhood classrooms and some things our early childhood staff needs. So almost a million dollars in early childhood investments proposed in this preliminary budget. Then we look at our increased staffing. So what are our staffing levels, and what are the needs of the students we're serving, and where are we needing to increase staff? So staffing for instruction would be staff that's being deployed through the staffing process with schools. So Dr. Salin and her team, along with Dr. Price, work through that process with schools and looking at staffing profiles. The other thing, the second line on this slide is really important, and we'll have a slide on this later when we talk about federal funds. We are proposing some increased funding to make sure we can sustain one counselor in every school, even though we've been given a letter of discontinuation for a federal grant. That's about half of what's necessary, and I'll explain why that, why that is when we get to federal funds, but we are increasing to make up for a potential loss in federal funds. We did see enrollment increase for English language learners, and so there's an increase in FTE there, and then some needs based on school-specific needs, a coordinator to a principal, looking at music itinerants, some student needs related to speech, language, school pathologist and occupational therapist. You can also see some special education needs as far as para hours, teacher leader, speech, language, also investing in health technicians for TCA in the graduation pathway, and then investing in point five FTE so that we have another director for elementary education and TCA teacher. Each year when we build the budget and we build the staffing profile, we look at taking out retirees and adding new positions at an average salary. That does yield a savings. So as we have people retiring that are higher in the pay scale and we're filling with what would be an average starting salary, that is what we call budget to actual staffing. So you can see that negative four point four then brings this list to about one point eight million dollars. Staff well-being and outcomes. You can see some of our goals there that are listed on our website related to what we're pursuing under that area of the strategic plan. And salary and benefit increases are very important for retention of our current staff and recruitment of staff. Throughout the negotiation process, we have approved contracts ranging from four point five five to ten percent based on the circumstance with the employee group. So that is a total of about eighteen point five million dollars in additional. This is typically our largest factor when our budget goes from year to year. So whenever we're building our budget and we take it from the previous year and we're making changes for the next year, the negotiated salary and benefit package being close to twenty million dollars is not out of the norm. That's very typical. One thing that is unique this year is legislative bill six forty-five passed, and this was part of a budget bill from the state where there is a decrease in the employer, the employee, and the state contribution to the retirement system. So as the employer, because this is the budget for the employer, there is a statutorily required decrease in what will be contributed to the school retirement system of two percent. It is something that gets evaluated every year. So something we had a lot of conversation is how do we build a budget that prepares for if the next actuarial report this fall says that we need to increase this again? And how do we make sure that we have sustainability and we can stay solvent in our commitment to our staff when it comes to the required contribution for retirement systems? And so you'll notice that as we walk through the presentation that we did have that in mind. And then we did have a request and fund some increases for middle school coach and official pay based on need to fill positions and have people that are willing to do that work. So with the six point two, which is unique this year, reduction, that then brings the salary and benefit increases down to about twelve point three million. The next category that we'll look at is family and community engagement. So you can see the goals related to family and community engagement. We have proposals within family and community engagement for next year's budget. We're mailing less. We're doing much more digitally, so there's a slight reduction there. We are looking at potentially engaging in an agreement with a federal lobbyist who could help us surprise of the federal program changes that could be happening or funding modifications that could be happening at the federal level. We do have some travel and professional development needs in civic engagement. We have grants that expire in places like community CLCs. So there's the addition of a community builder, who is someone who kind of regionally works with a group of CLCs from the office, the central office for CLCs. And then we have some additional training, replacement of some grant funds for new staff for security. So that's about a hundred and fifty-four thousand. The last category of the strategic plan would be district systems and operations. So you can see the goals that we're working on through district systems and operations. One of the big goals last year, we did, made two major steps towards this goal, was number one, we re-formatted this very presentation to very purposefully demonstrate the alignment to the elements of the strategic plan. So making sure that we had alignment of the budget request and the resource decisions to the strategic plan. The other big thing we made changes to last year was doing that online input window. We had almost two thousand views on like Facebook and other mechanisms of looking at our budget material, and we wanted to make sure people had somewhere to go where they could interact with the material. And if I remember correctly, we had a couple hundred people that actually did that, so that engaged in that process. So district systems and operations, and then required fixed cost increases. So this is not our health insurance premiums. This is actually our property insurance. So our physical property insurance for the school district goes up, and we have to make sure we have that budgeted for transportation parts, custodial supplies, software systems, utilities, and then our external audit firm for our external audit, which is required by law for the board. So those, those are pretty typical costs that, that aren't too surprising that they're growing. The one that I would like to spend a little time on was the increase for one-time maintenance needs of two million dollars. So we would be putting in the budget two million dollars. That would be for one-time maintenance needs at existing facilities. So this could be roof repair and replacement, resurfacing of a parking lot or sidewalks. It's now time in the rotation to refinish gym floors at our large high school, large floor spaces, any functional upgrades related to security or accommodating student growth. We are a growing school district, and then making accommodations at school sites for student needs. So we are at the point where we're bringing to a close the two thousand and twenty bond issue. The two thousand and twenty bond issue had a lot of infrastructure work going on in it, and we're looking at what's still on the list and what still needs to be happen in the near term as far as maintaining our facilities in the very good quality that we're fortunate to have here in Lincoln, and how do we keep up with that? Every year, we have requests that are submitted that we are not able to bud, budget all of the requests. So we have about three point six million across different departments that was not funded. So as we have the conversation, we always want to make sure the community knows that the board has to make tough choices and tough decisions, and there's, we have to make choices based on priorities. One of the important things is that I know the board has expressed a great deal of appreciation for is we take the priority input from the people closest to the programming. So the director who's closest to the programming, the person closest to the programming, really kind of is able to set priorities, and we're able to respond to those priorities when we build the budget. The other thing at Lincoln Public Schools we just want to highlight is not only are we making tough decisions, but we're also making decisions with the eye towards cost savings. So our geothermal system that we use to heat and cool our buildings is pretty widely known as a significant cost-saving measure in the Lincoln community, and an example is when we did Park Middle School, the indoor air quality project there, it decreased the energy cost at Park Middle School by fifty-four percent. Another more recent example is we've invested in some solar, and we've done that both at the Northwest and the Standing Bear site, and there's demand charges for energy that we experience as commercial customers, and so we're decreasing those demand charges because we have the solar energy coming in and saving about four hundred and eighty-five dollars per month. And then another fact kind of from our sustainability program is about fifty-six percent of the district waste is diverted from the landfill, and we do pay to send things to the landfill. And so diverting that, we reuse, we recycle, and we compost. So, so these are all great things, you know, for our community, for resiliency for the school district and sustainability, but they're also cost-saving measures for the school district. So when we round out our general fund budget of expenditures, you can see the budget last year was five hundred and thirty-nine million, and the proposed budget for two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six is around five hundred and fifty-nine million. So about a twenty million dollar increase. When you move all the pieces and parts around, just a reminder that the salary and benefit packages are the biggest component of that. In addition, our biggest cost is personnel. So we're about ninety percent personnel. So I think it's really important to remember that as Lincoln Public Schools brings in revenue, whether from state sources or property taxes, the biggest thing we do with it next is we distribute it through payroll. So we're running a twenty-five to thirty million dollar payroll each month, and so we're a huge part of the Lincoln economy. Our staff members are then dining at restaurants and shopping in stores and participating in the economy as a whole. This is just a picture of our five-year budget trend. This is something that we do here in Lincoln Public Schools just to look at our budget trend and how does it compare to some economic measures. So the most common economic measure used is inflation. Inflation is not really the best metrics to compare our budgets to because our budget is really not built for just buying things. It's built for paying people. So another metric that exists from the Bureau of Labor Statistics is the Employment Cost Index, which is an index of how much it costs to employ people year over year. The, next year's not available till September. The, next year's not available till September. But you can see our budget increases compared to what is the cost for employing people in the government sector based on the Bureau of Labor Statistics. And this is that graphically. You can see kind of the significant change we've seen over the last five years in the blue line with inflation. And then you can see the expenditure budget and the red line would be the Employment Cost Index. Now we'll dive into the revenue budget and talk about, we just talked about all the needs of the school district and how we assembled those and organized those needs in a preliminary proposed expenditure budget. Now we're going to talk about how that will be funded. We experienced some of these very similar topics related to volatility when we talk about the revenue side of the budget and we use a three-year forecast. So something we talk about a lot is we manage year to year from cash flow. But we have to do that in a very planned and measured fashion. Because if we were to use significant cash flow in one year, we better know where the revenue is going to come to replace that the following year or we need to be using it for one-time expenses. And so we always have to have an eye towards sustainability in the future. The board has always had the opinion that we don't want to put programming in place and turn around and have to take it out the next year and put it back and take it out and create instability for families and students. One thing we're navigating right now is the impact of changes of federal funding coming down from the federal level. So this is an infographic that was developed just to kind of do a snapshot of Lincoln Public Schools, what federal grants are available in Lincoln Public Schools, and how much Lincoln Public Schools receives in federal grants. Some of these are multi-year grants, so this number would span over a couple of years. But it is approximately a hundred million dollars. So this is something we keep a very close eye on. And as I indicated, we've already had some news on the federal front related to the school-based mental health grant. That was a seven point four million dollar grant. So this is a little box from the graphic above. It's elementary sites to make sure that we have a school counselor in every site. So there's about eighteen FTE that are in school sites that would potentially be eliminated with this grant when it's discontinued in December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-five. So our preliminary proposed budget, I shared with you on the slide, we are including nine FTE, which is about half. So that will provide half of the funding that we need in the next budget for continuation of the program for twenty-five, twenty-six. So the grant will cover the cost through December thirty-first. And then the district can pick up the remainder of the cost for the remainder of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Meanwhile, the team is working very hard to appeal the decision, make sure that we're providing any clarification information we can and we're seeking to restore the funding. And we're closely monitoring our federal funds and staying very in tune with any recent communications related to federal funds. So I want to be really clear, this will sustain the counselor positions for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And then when we go to develop the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget, the board will have the conversation and we'll only have half of that variable left to come up with because we're already taking half of it now. And the counseling program has been a top priority as far as expanding that to every school for the board in the past. We also talk a lot about state funding. So state funding comes to us predominantly through the state equalization aid formula. So we now receive a portion of that from fed, from foundation aid. But then we are still what's called an equalized school district. So our needs minus our resources is equalization. So as our valuations have gone up, and if you remember from the enrollment slide, we kind of had some flatter years of student enrollment. So our student needs weren't climbing as fast and our valuation was climbing. We experienced decreases in state aid. So you can see our state aid in twenty-four, twenty-five, this current fiscal year, about half of where we were in twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen at a hundred and forty-six million. So last year, we did have to increase the levy. We lost about thirty-two million dollars in state aid because of the valuation increase. But then this year, we had lower valuation and we had higher student enrollment. So our state aid is increasing about ten million dollars. So it's, it's just important, long-range planning, to know that as values go up, state funding goes down. And so as we look to years in the future, values increasing, state aid goes down. Then the school district has to look at the levy to make that change. We are currently estimating about a seven percent increase in the total value of real property for the twenty-five, twenty-six preliminary proposed budget. We're currently in the window where property owners are going through the protest process or giving additional clarification to the assessor's office. And we will not receive final numbers until August twentieth. And our actual estimate will not match our certification. It's way too big of a number. But we will work through the process to make sure that we respond to that data when it becomes available. So when we talk about assessed valuation growing, probably the most significant was the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four year when valuations grew twenty-two and a half percent. So then that's when the following year state aid dropped thirty-two million. Then twenty-four, twenty-five, the year we're currently in, valuations grew three point eight-five. So that was a slower valuation year, but we had the student enrollment, which is why state aid is going up. We are estimating about seven percent growth in valuation. And you can kind of match that as valuation has grown in this chart, that basically parallels where the state funding has dropped. So this is our preliminary estimate of the property tax levy. These numbers will change when we get our actual valuation August twentieth. So we are proposing based on the increased in valuation and the increase in state aid to lower the school district total levy by seven cents. So there's about seven cents in the general fund and then about an additional penny in the bond fund and the Qualified Capital Purpose Undertaking Fund. You will notice that there's a penny that we're estimating to add to the building fund. We have not levied in the building funds since twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And as I indicated before, we have a number of needs for facility across the district. Some of those are maintenance at existing facilities, which can be handled with the general fund. Some have to do with student growth, property, things like that, and that has to fall to the building fund. And so the building fund, we are proposing to increase that levy by one penny, which is included in the seven cent drop. So the seven cent drop still occurs with this investment. The building you, can be used for acquiring sites, creating buildings, things like that. And it's necessary for a growing school district with the facility needs and the footprint that we have. The current building fund balance is about seven point eight million. Keeping in mind, we have about eight million square feet of prop, of buildings in our school district. So here's the history of the property tax levy. And I think this somewhat of a world of change that's new for us is for years, the levy was fairly static and we used our three-year cash flow model. And we would just bridge from that high valuation year to the low valuation year to the high valuation year. Well, now the way the system is working is we are having to change the levy more regularly and respond to the valuation a little bit differently, the way the new formulas and the state formulas work. So this is bringing the levy down to about a dollar four, which will be a very historic low for the school district. Keeping in mind that as valuations go up, state aid will go down and we'll have to respond accordingly in future years. And this slide really portrays the idea of property taxes and state aid. However, as we reflect on this side, this year in December, property owners received state credits off of their tax bill. So I think once we get this data in, we're going to have to reflect on how do we define property taxes and how do we define state funding. We're going to have to account for that a portion of the property taxes are now paid for from the state. And so as we close the books to the twenty-four, twenty-five school year and we know what those percentages are, I do think we're going to have to add that nuance of there's a portion of the property tax bill that's actually now state-funded. And we'll have the data set at the end of this fiscal year so we can make that change. So even though the sixty-three and the fourteen seems very extreme, it's actually more state-funded from that when you take into account the credits. We always try to talk about, and I know Ms. Mumgarde, as Chair of the Finance Committee, always wants us to break it down for what does that mean for an average homeowner? And so if we go back to two thousand twenty-two, prior to some of the big swings and changes, the district historically had a levy around a dollar twenty. It was a dollar twenty-one. And an average home was two hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Valuations grew by twenty-three percent. The average home value actually grew to two hundred and eighty-one thousand. And we did lower the levy to a dollar seven. So taxes went up two hundred and forty-six dollars. That's per year. So two hundred and forty-six dollars per year. That was about a nine percent increase. The average home went up again from twenty-three to twenty-four, from two eighty-one to two ninety. We did have to increase the levy. We lost thirty-two million dollars in state aid. So that was about a seven percent increase. And then this proposal is actually fairly flat, not much of a tax increase at all when you put the math together if the home goes up seven percent. There are homes in Lincoln that are going to go up ten percent. There's homes that are going to go two percent. Every homeowner's experience is going to be different. But using our estimate of seven percent and lowering the levy to a dollar four, the taxes would grow by eight dollars per year. So this stacks up our state aid, property taxes, and other revenue into a five-year trend. And then I think this really tells the story of what school districts have to navigate a little bit better. And many people have heard me talk about that even though we're getting caps and lids and various layers that are placed on school districts across the state with some recent caps and lids, all of those kind of have this premise that school district revenue is this incremental process. And the reality is that's not how it works. So if you have a high valuation year, that year you might be higher in state aid. So you might bring in seven percent revenue that year like we did in twenty-one, twenty-two. And then the next year, you could have state aid drop and valuation growth drop in the same year and you'd be at two percent. And the following year, valuation goes up and state aid goes up. So it's that interconnectedness of valuation and state aid that kind of creates these peaks and valley, valleys and why we've always advocated that local control is best because we have to be able to navigate these peaks and valleys and smooth them out from year to year. So you can see we're currently estimating what is a little bit more of an incremental number with a percent revenue increase at about four percent this year. We will see as the assessor does, does their work, as their office does their work, whether that moves into a little bit more of an incremental fashion or whether we continue to see alternating years, changes in revenue. So when you look at our source of funds, once again, we're going to have to reevaluate this a little bit when we think about the state property tax credits that are new this year. We're currently about sixty-three percent funded with property taxes. And then when you break it down, here's our general sources of revenue. We are using about one point three million from cash flow to fund this budget, which means expenditures are exceeding revenue by about one point three million. And then you can see the levy is dropping from ninety-eight cents to ninety-one cents. Schools in Nebraska are funded from property taxes, state aid, grants, other fines and licenses. And this is just a snapshot. And like I said, these percentages are going to change when we look at some of the new legislation that was passed in the special session last fall. So we have a summary that kind of walks through the totals of what I just reviewed with you and that's available on our website. And we are ranked two hundred and eleventh out of two hundred and forty-four school districts in the state of Nebraska for per pupil spending. You would expect that we would have some scale that would benefit our spending. But then we also serve very diverse populations and a lot of students with special needs and lots of needs across the community. We spent about sixteen thousand per student compared to the state, which was seventeen thousand two hundred for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And just a reminder of the opportunities in front of us. So there's a board meeting tonight, the online input window will open, virtual forum at noon, in-person forum here at six o'clock, and then a virtual forum at six o'clock tomorrow night. And then most importantly, I work with an amazing team of people with Kim Schmidt, Jess Jefferson, Doug Anderson. They worked very hard on all of these details and putting all of the pieces of the puzzle together. And we spend a lot of time working through and challenging each other on how we're going to solve problems and figure it out and bring it to all of you. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions from board members at this time.
Are there any questions for Dr. Standish?
Well, as Chair of the Fund Releasing, what we really need to be made known is how many times we've talked about this. And so the fact that there are no questions from us is because there have been a lot of questions that we've already really talked through in different committees. As Dr. Standish pointed out, this conversation, we, we pass a budget and we start, we start talking about the next one almost right away. And I believe, you know, one thing we really have to talk through and we have such a great team bringing it to us is that there has been in the last two to three years, a lot of changes on how we can consider making a budget with a lot of the lids and the caps and so forth. And I think that you've helped us navigate through a couple of interesting years of the ups and downs. I'm not a fan of a lid, of a levy going up and down. As Dr. Standish knows, I said, coming from a very, you know, a budgeted household, it is hard for things to change that much. So, you know, truly understanding people going, oh, you got up and now you're going down and now you're going to go up again. And the reality is that we are trying as hardest to maintain those waves, I think is a way of saying it, to be as livable as possible while also keeping a quality education system and almost, and always keeping in mind, how do we have the best classrooms that we can have for our students? And that includes not only having the best educators, but it has the best buildings, the best staff we can have to support those buildings and lunches and so forth. I mean, it all goes down to the buses. We all know this. As you say, we budget for people. And, and those people we're budgeting for is so that we can give a quality education to the youth of our community. So on my behalf, we don't have a lot of questions because we've asked you a lot of them. And I feel like we've answered a lot of them. And so now it's time for the community to give us their questions on what they see of what we have put out there. And I want to thank you and your team for such good, hard work yet again and such clarity in helping us understand a very difficult, I'm not in the habit of making a half a billion dollar budget, so a very difficult process and see. So thank you very much.
You highlight a really good point where part of our process does include work within that forecast, forecasting into the future with the Finance Committee. And then opportunities one-on-one with board members, new board members. I want to say thank you. This was a lot to take in. Meeting with me right after being elected saying, let's talk about how the budget works. But there has been a lot of conversations and tonight really is about how do we share this with the community and then give the community an opportunity to give feedback? And we'll make sure that all of you have that feedback very diligently.
Any other questions? Bob?
Actually, I don't have so much a question, a comment, and that I really like the evolution of your slide set over the last couple of years because when I first ran, the complaints I used to got get up from people. This mostly addresses those. So for example, the inflation slide showing that really we're employer, it's the employer price index. It's not their budget out of control. It's just the fact that cost, hiring people goes up and that's pretty much what it shows. I want to point out that when, when we do get an increase in state aid, we do try to give it back to the community and then we are dropping our levy seven cents. And the average estimate, assuming everything pans out, is only an eight dollar increase, which is good. And also I think the most, one of the things I've learned from you the most is the fact that how these things fluctuate and one, the variable affects the other variable, but not in the same year. And that's why you get these wide swings and that's why you have to look over three years and manage cash flow. And so I think, I thank you for making your presentation much more understandable over time to someone who's not a finance person. So thanks.
And I appreciate the feedback. We're always open to take a look at things and see what we can do better.
Mara?
And as a new board member, I appreciate when I was first meeting with you, you explained how people, you know, from, in LPS brought their requests and it worked through a chain of command and it was a process. And the experts weighed in on what requests were bought to, were brought to you for the budget and that we couldn't say yes to everything, just like you do in your household. So I think that was a really important point to bring out to the community as well. So.
Thank you.
Dr. Standish, would you like to also inform the public that this is the time to make the comments because we have statutory deadlines that we have to meet? So the sooner they can provide us comments, the, the better the chances that we can address them. And once it gets too late in the game, like around the pink postcard time, that's too late for us to consider any comments. So could you please speak on that, please?
Yes, absolutely. One, one frustrating part about the pink postcard process is a lot of times that might be the first time someone tunes in to the Lincoln Public Schools budget. That's a month after the school year is started. We've already made all of our staffing decisions, which ninety percent of our budget is staff. It's not that we can't take that in and carry it forward to a future year budget, but there's not. but there's not going to be an immediate change at that point. So that's why we work hard to have everything ready so early. I mean, this is really early in the process to have things ready so that we have some time to take it out to the community and get feedback. And really that feedback by mid-July is when we need it in order for the board to really consider any changes to what's being proposed to the community tonight.
And I would say that we have taken feedback in that short period of time and discussed it and worked it within our budget. So, I mean, if it's a 20 million request, I, I thank you and we'll think about it for next year. But, but, I mean, there are things that we can reconsider or we hadn't considered. So that's an important thing for the community to know too, that we're not just saying it. We really do listen and we have in the past reevaluated some steps and included some things. If we can, we'll add that if we can. We have a very tight budget because like everyone, we are living in tight times. So, but the ideas can come in. But now is the time.
Well, thank you very much for a very, very detailed presentation to you and the entire team.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
All right. Next on the agenda is public comment. Blue cards are available at the entrance for those wishing to speak. Each speaker is allowed three minutes and may provide printed materials to the board. Please begin your remarks by introducing yourself, your address, the name of any organization that you are representing, and we will inform you when one minute remains. We have one blue card here. Wendy Gumm. Would you please come forward?
Thank you. First, I wanted to thank Liz for giving the budget agenda tonight. And I want to make sure that people realize that we are in the business of serving students in the school district. And as Ms. Mumgarde mentioned, you don't usually do a half a billion dollar budget. And that half a billion dollar budget is here to serve students first and foremost. And we are in the people business. So I'm here tonight to talk about closing the ethics violation loophole in Education Code Title 92, Chapter 27, Section 004.03F and looking for Lincoln Public Schools to provide some leadership in this. Currently, this section states that a teacher shall not tutor for remu- remuneration students assigned to his or her classes unless provided approval by the local school board of education. That language addresses private tutoring, but it admits a growing concern in school athletics, paid coaching of the very students assigned to a coach's classroom or team. A simple but meaningful clarification could better protect students and reinforce our commitment to fairness. I propose amending 004.03F to state, "Shall not tutor and/or coach for remuneration students assigned to his or her, his or her classes or on a school team unless approved by the local school board of education." Here's why this matters. When a public school coach runs paid off-season teams and programs involving students they directly coach during the year, it creates both a perception and in some cases, a practice where participation depends on payment. Whether intentional or not, the message to student athletes and their families becomes pay-to-play or risks being benched. That undermines student equity and it's not aligned with the core values of Lincoln Public Schools already uphold. It's not valued by any public school system in the United States. This proposed revision reflects and reinforces existing LPS policies, especially Policy 6400, Professional Ethics, which calls on educators to maintain the integrity of their role and ensure that professional conduct is above reproach. Policy 5520, Student Fees, which states that no student should be denied participation based on their ability to pay unless approved by the school board in these meetings. Policy 6441, Staff-Student Relations, which sets clear expectation for healthy professional boundaries. The LPS mission centers on preparing all students for success. That includes ensuring access to activities that build confidence, teamwork and leadership, which is very, very prominent in school athletics, regardless of a family's financial means. And as you mentioned, you're not used to creating a half a million dollar budget and people's budgets fluctuate. So just, this is an opportunity to align policy language with practices. By closing this ethical gray area, we create clear guardrails for staff, reinforce public trust and most importantly, protect the student's growth and empower positive experience. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is closed session and we do not have a request for closed session. So the meeting is adjourned.